Thank you, everybody, for being here, by the way, on this terrible night. Good evening. This meeting in the Winthorpe Town Council for February 20th, 2015, is now called to order. This meeting is being recorded and may be televised live. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilor Delvento will lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Also, collect your questions. You can call a roll.
Councilor Callum, Councilor Sanford, Councilor Bunkory, Councilor Barone, Councilor Terry, Councilor Bayagen.
Here.
Councilor Delvento.
Yep.
Vice President Mayo.
Here.
President Gill.
Present.
Thank you.
The forum is present. Minutes from the last meeting as circulated, minutes of January 20th. Did I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Delvento, seconded by Councilor Bayagen.
I wasn't present.
Seconded by Councilor Sanford.
Seconded by Councilor Sanford. Good evening, Councilor Callum. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation by the Board of Health. Chief, should we do yours first? So you've got to get back on the road, right?
Well, it's up to you guys.
Okay. If there's no objection, I want to just switch the agenda a little bit and recognize Chief Flanagan, Chief DeLaHanty, who isn't with us yet, and Chief of DPW, Paul Steeckala, with citations for what they've done over the past several weeks, of course, over the last many years, but the past several days, they've really shined and been on duty and done a remarkable job. So what I've done is, from the council, we've prepared citations, and I will present one to Paul as chief of the fire department, and then I don't think that Terry or Steve are going to be here tonight, but if they are, I will present those later. We want to present Paul's tonight so we can get him back on the road. We gave him five minutes to come to the meeting, so. We have a town of Winthorpe Town Council citation, "Be it known to all that the Winthorpe Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to the Winthorpe Fire Department in recognition of your extraordinary cooperative efforts with the police and the Department of Public Works, providing for the safety and well-being of our citizens of Winthrop during and after the historic blizzard of 2015. On behalf of the residents of the town of Winthrop, we extend our most sincere congratulations and best wishes to you and the fire department in your future endeavors." Paul, can you come up? Chief, don't go away. If you wrap Terry, go take it to his birthday party.
You've got such a great voice on the code red.
I know. Yeah. My wife listens to.
There you go. The code reds have been tremendous. Thank you, Chief. If you would deliver that, I would appreciate it, and before you leave, I'm just going to read the ones for the -- the police department basically says the same thing as the fire department, but commends them for their cooperation with the fire department and the DPW. DPW says the same thing and commends them for their cooperation and cooperative effort with the police and fire. So to all of you, guys and girls, who have been life-saving over the last several days, we appreciate your efforts, and we know how difficult it's been, and again, thanks, Paul.
President, I did want to also recognize the school department's custodians, who have done just as a tremendous job with getting the schools ready to actually go to school, and as well as the housing authorities, Department of Facilities and whatnot, for they've been doing the same exact work for the past two weeks, and they've been working straight out to do this as well.
And I think a note that goes with that, we've seen a tremendous cooperation with Housing Authority jumping in. Jimmy, you can mention that. And that didn't always happen, but Housing and DPW and everybody's going back and forth.
Since we're handing out, you know, roses in this Valentine's, uh, Christmas, I would like to add to the shortlist that's getting longer by the day, our regional partners. NWRA has been enormously helpful to this community, taking responsibility for the truck and providing equipment when we need it. The relationship that we forged with, through the chief, with NWRA has been, you know, one that we've come to rely on very heavily for, you know, helping us to keep the mains and keep our truck group safe, and they've done a tremendous job for us. Also Masport, they were asked multiple times to come in and support, augment our equipment needs, and they've jumped to and provided that additional assistance as well. Particularly Fire Chief Donahue at Masport really has stepped up and helped us considerably, so we're grateful for them. That wouldn't happen without our speaker, you know, playing a lead role in opening those doors and keeping them open for us, so we thank Speaker DeLeon for his help and always being there for us when we needed. You know, the magnitude of the storm is close without saying. We've all lived it, we've all experienced it, and we'll have more to say on it later on in the evening. But, you know, I've grown deeply impressed and reliant upon the expertise and abilities of our fire chief, our police chief, and our DPW director, Callum, who just by sheer will and more, you know, in continuing to fight, you know, these storms and to do the kinds of strategic thinking that is so necessary to make sure that our streets are safe and we can continue to operate. And, you know, hearing tonight from one who would know, a reporter here, that we're doing better than most communities is heartening, you know, in terms of how we've been able to address this. I've said in the past couple of weeks that, you know, when you fight a fight that's in a different weight class, you can, I'll punch yourself very quickly, and that was our situation in Winthrop. You know, we're very good at about 18 inches, and type, we're excellent. When we exceed 18 inches, you know, it gets very tiring and challenging extremely quickly, and we've learned some lessons. We'll go through those lessons over the next few weeks and fine-tune what our needs are. You'll see some of that expressed, you know, in, you know, further discussions with the council in terms of budget and whatnot, but, you know, these guys really stepped up, and from not only the chiefs, but on down through the ranks, these guys put in the 30-plus hours of time that they needed to at any request, and have, you know, we've also been augmented by contractors, we've been augmented by a number of pieces that we got from out of state that helped us, and we're critical in terms of making the difference. So there's a lot of folks who participated, and also, let's not forget the residents, who their patients have been tested, their shoulders and backs have been tested, and, you know, they've done every -- and for the majority of this community who understands what living in Winthrop really means, which is dealing with Mother Nature and the challenges that come with it. And we've had some complaints, but, you know, all in all, I think by and large, people are understanding of the challenges that we've had, and I really appreciate the patience and understanding that we receive from our residents, who understand how much effort it takes to move this snow. We've had to do 2,500 tons of snow a day moving it, and people don't understand the magnitude of that, but when you do it day in and day out, it wears out the muscles and the mind and the equipment, and so it's been extraordinarily, you know, taxing and testing the storm, and we're not done yet, but, you know, it's through the leadership of the chief as our emergency manager director, and Terry and Paul and Steve working collaboratively, and John Lucero working collaboratively every single day, understanding what the task was at hand and directing our resources appropriately. And I have grown, as I said in our close by saying, I have grown enormously thankful and impressed with the talent that this town has in its management. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think that the dedication of those people behind the wheels on the plows for not eight-hour shifts, but 24- and 35-hour shifts and just keep going. And I also wanted to mention the medical reserve corps, they were ready to go, they were all keyed up. They didn't have to open, thank God, but they were ready to go, so everybody was out there working and working together. It's a great, great effort, and thank you to all of you. Moving on, Board of Health has a presentation tonight. They have some proposed changes in the smoking regulation, and I'd like to have Chairman Nick McCarty along with Heather England and along with Tracy Honig come up.
Yeah.
Okay. If you want to do that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Council President. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And good evening to you and the entire town council. We're here today to discuss with you guys some of the new tobacco regulations that we are proposing for Winthrop. This all started to come about about six months ago, when you, Peter, were discussing updating the Winthrop tobacco regulations, which, once we started to dive into, actually discovered that they were so out of date, they still mentioned smoking sections in restaurants. And once we sort of decided to take a deep dive in, we coupled it with some of the studies that have been happening recently on Logan Airport, and we're here today to kind of unveil what our proposals are to you, to get your feedback and what you think about them. We'll also be doing something very similar on Thursday night at a public hearing that we're having in this room to get the entire public's feedback. So without further ado, here's Heather to discuss the specifics with you.
Thanks so much for having us tonight. So the board began the process of updating the tobacco control regulations a number of months ago, and we worked with an expert from the tobacco control expert from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and there are two parts to the proposed new regulations. One is a regulation restricting the sale of tobacco products, and the other is a regulation prohibiting smoking in workplaces and public places. And by way of background, as Nick mentioned, we did review the Logan Airport health study and the Winthrop community needs health assessment and developing the regulations. We know from the Logan Airport health study that children in Winthrop in the high exposure zones are three to four times more likely to suffer from asthma, and adults in Winthrop are also at an increased risk for COPD. So put simply, Winthrop residents, by virtue of living near the airport, are at a higher risk for respiratory disease. As a result of the study, the Department of Public Health recommended that the community take action to further reduce the conditions that exacerbate asthma and COPD, and to take action to enforce youth tobacco access laws and secondhand smoking laws. Additionally, the Winthrop community health needs assessment identified the top three health concerns of Winthrop residents as substance abuse, the environment, and cancer, all three of which are related to cigarettes and to an increased risk for respiratory disease. The health study also noted that Winthrop residents experience higher rates of asthma, COPD, and cancer than the Massachusetts average, and additionally, some of the data from 2009 and 2011 indicate that Winthrop high school students, in some cases, are using alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana at higher rates than the state average. So to summarize the proposed changes, the proposed regulation expands the definition of tobacco products to include e-cigarettes, so the regulations would impose the same restrictions on e-cigarettes as regular cigarettes. The proposed regulation will require signs about smoking cessation in all stores that sell tobacco products. The proposed regulation will impose minimum prices on cigars and packages of cigars, such that those minimum prices mirror the minimum prices in Boston, and what Boston has done is put a $2.50 minimum price on all cigars, and the research shows that these minimum prices act as a real deterrent to middle school and high school kids from purchasing single cigars that often cost less than a dollar. The proposed regulation will cap the number of tobacco sales permits at 20. The town currently has issued 18 permits, so it allows for a little bit more expansion, but not a lot. And this is a significant change. The proposed regulation seeks to increase the minimum legal sales age for tobacco from 18 to 21, and we understand there are a number of Massachusetts communities that have already done this. New York City, I understand, has increased the minimum sales age, and it looks to be the trend. The primary reason for seeking the higher age is that the increased smoking age makes it more difficult for middle school students and high school students to access or obtain cigarettes. The research shows that increasing the drinking age to 21 really decreased the amount of alcohol that minors were consuming, and then the other fact is that more than 80% of adult smokers began smoking before they were 18 years old. So the policy goal here really is to make it more difficult for the young people in town to obtain cigarettes and to prevent them from starting smoking in the first place. The proposed regulation would ban the sale of blunt wraps, which I understand are primarily used for products other than tobacco, and the proposed regulation would ban self-service displays, commercial roll-your-own machines, and cigarette vending machines. The proposed regulation would also ban the sale of tobacco products in educational institutions, and this is the other big policy proposal, is that the regulation would prohibit smoking in town parks, athletic fields, and beaches. There are a couple of reasons for this. One, and a big reason for me, was that the trash that ends up, the cigarette butt trash that ends up on the grounds and in the sand at the beach. And second, the smoking ban at parks and athletic fields does set a better example for our kids and eliminates any, you know, risk of exposure to secondhand smoke. The Board of Health recommends that enforcement of this provision be accomplished simply with a no-smoking sign at the park, at the beach, things like that, and with residents, you know, politely reminding each other that it's no smoking in those locations. The proposed regulation would also ban smoking in hotels and restaurants, and would ban the use of e-cigarettes wherever regular cigarettes are prohibited. There are a couple of notes to follow up on the transcript article last week. The regulation does not prohibit rolling papers that are not made out of tobacco, so regular rolling papers would still be permissible. The regulation does not ban cigarettes, it simply regulates them the same way regular cigarettes would be, and then the last one is, the regulation does not prohibit the flavor of cigars. I do want to acknowledge that this is an aggressive public health policy proposal, but based on the data from the Logan Airport health study and the health needs assessment, Winthrop residents are at higher risk for respiratory disease, and I think there is a real need for us to be extra careful, given that data, particularly with the kids in town. And again, this is the board's proposal and policy recommendation at this point. We will have, hold a public hearing on Thursday night, February 12, at 6:00 in the Harvey Room of Town Hall. We are very anxious to get feedback from the town councilors and from the residents in the community.
Thank you. Heather. Tracy, and what's your name, Nick? Any questions or comments from the council?
I just want to point, Heather, that it said you wanted to ban the purchase of cigarettes in educational facilities. Where would that be?
So I don't think we have any educational institutions in town that currently do that.
Do not currently. There is none.
It just kind of catch up to the state with that.
It's the same with the commercial roll-your-own machines and the self-service displays. I don't believe we have any in town.
It's a proactive regulation. If anyone wanted to set something there.
So this is pretty much just defining what we already have, with a couple of minor exceptions.
Mostly, yes, putting it into law.
And a question on the pricing, just for curiosity, does Boston set a standard that's higher than other places?
But lower, isn't it? It's not as aggressive as other areas where cigars and things like that.
So some communities have no minimum price. Other communities have a higher minimum price, say $5 minimum price. Boston is $2.50. We thought it would be wise to go with the same minimum pricing that Boston uses.
Just on cigars or on cigarettes as well?
Just on cigars.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And where does that go? Does it go back to the towns, go to the vendor, the retail?
No, it's all the vendor who sort of takes in that amount. It's the minimum amount in which they're allowed to sell it, under the thinking that it's very easy for a 17-year-old kid to get a cigar when it's only 99 cents. So to raise that to 250 is really a very minimum burden on an adult, but it would be cost prohibitive, hopefully, for younger people.
And that would go right to the vendor, too?
No, it's not a tax. It is merely the minimum amount which they're allowed to sell.
Counselor Callum?
One other thing, Heather, what is the age in Boston? Is it 21?
No, it is 18.
Oh, it is 18. Okay, so are there other communities close to Winthrop that have increased it to 21?
There are many communities across the state who have increased it to 21. Exactly which ones in this specific area, I'd have to get back to you on, but the list of Massachusetts communities in general, it's scores.
Yeah, so that's part of your assessment.
Counselor Delvento? As we move forward with how we're going to go with this, some, and I'm looking at this, this is going to take a little bit of a while, because some of these need to be modifications of our town bylaws, just because, for example, I think in our bylaws, we do have a, something on the vending machines, on all those licenses. Some of these look like they could be regulations. Thus, we also have to determine what's the penalty for violation. Is it, you know, the smoking, e-cigarette with the standard in a bar, is it going to be a double duty?
I think they.
You know, a $50 fine as well as a tick against the licensee?
There's more details that--
There's more detail in the draft regulation, and what we did was use, we started with the template proposed by the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which is what all the communities in the state are using, and we went through the list of options there, chose what we thought was, you know, appropriate for our community, but wasn't appropriate for our community, and the regulation does go into more detail about penalties and enforcement and--
Because we were going to have a whole process of codification of this that has to-- My understanding is that the Board of Health has the authority to impose the regulations, so we'll just have to bring our own.
Yes, what we're talking about is independently passing regulations.
Yeah, they don't need authority.
The Board of Health is unique insofar as that Massachusetts law gives us permission to pass reasonable health regulations.
No, I understand. I just think we're going to need to get council opinion on, and I'm not challenging, don't go down a path, because there are some bylaws we have and ordinances we have that actually govern, that may have to come off the books. Right, yeah, we may have to. So you get that cross-reference thing going of all the--
Yeah, make sure it's all on the same page.
That's something we'll have to take a look at to ensure every measure continues to be consistent.
Yeah, so there's no conflict between--
Right, right.
Counselor?
So, no, I do think it's a good thing to be a little bit more aggressive than maybe some of the surrounding communities, especially with the public being so concerned after the health studies and whatnot about the alarming rates of the asthma, that, you know, we've just got a grant, and hopefully, East Boston Health Center is going to come in here and help improve that, as well as the increased rates of chronic obstructed pulmonary disease. So I think that, you know, unfortunately, when I go by the high school to pick up my daughter sometimes on Fridays, a lot of, unfortunately, mostly girls that I see are smoking as soon as they get out the door, and I think anything we can do to make it more difficult for the, you know, high school students and whatnot to get access to this is a good thing. So, I mean, I commend you for being aggressive as well, and doing, you know, doing such diligent work in kind of getting it moving forward.
That's up to Board of Health. They've become very aggressive and positive.
It's nice to have a Board of Health.
That's a word for aggressive, yeah. Appreciate that.
A working Board of Health, nice.
Any questions from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman.
So it says ban smoking. First of all, I don't smoke. I just want you to realize that there are people that do. I don't even know if I feel they have rights, but obviously, they do, you know. I get upset at the cigarette butts and all that, but I'm looking at this 18 to 21, and I've always been hung up on that 18 thing, because you can get drafted at 18, and you can, back in my generation, you could go to Vietnam at 18, and I've always felt that, you know, there's a level. I understand all the other things, but I think you have to be cognizant of it in some way. You know, there's another element of, the person decides to take their dog to a walk, for a walk down to Ingleside Park, technically in violation, they're probably not bothering anybody, and I'm wondering if in some of these cases, we can't put some type of element of control. You're trying to control it by a sign, so you can carry on the same level and try and control it by getting people to focus on the fact that if they're going to smoke, they should at least have some type of barrier, not barrier, but some type of, you know, distance. To wipe out all of a park, you know, listen, I can see if you go down to the football game, Thanksgiving Day, okay, you're not going to be able to smoke there, you know, there's a lot of people around, but you go out to the Hannaford Park, and you go down to Ingleside Park, you go to some of these places, somebody wants to go out. I'm not sure I find that, you know, is, you know, I think there are still some, you know, things that people may want to do when they're not bothering anybody, and I wish they wouldn't litter completely differently.
Counselors?
Well, I agree with Councilor Mill. I would disagree that we need to get into the weeds and be more specific. I think we should see how these regulations affect the citizens of Winthrop, and if we see that these are cases that are going on, maybe we do make an adjustment at that point, but I'm not sure we try and figure out, you know, each individual incident that might, you know, occur that would be reasonable, I guess.
Well, that's one. On the age thing, Heather, I don't know if I read between the lines of what you said, but I sort of felt that you were saying if the kids could smoke at 18, that sort of pushes the age down like it did with alcohol. Is that what I heard? Because I agree, by the way, if the 18s can buy them for the 16s as opposed to the 21s buying them for the 19s.
That's the goal, is to eliminate, you know, the high school seniors buying cigarettes for, you know, younger friends, younger siblings.
Because the 18 and the ab services, I agree with you, but you have to be 18 to get in there.
But that being the case, there's causal evidence to suggest that that has had an overall detriment, okay? There certainly have been some significant, if you get into the study on that, there certainly have been some improvements, but not overall, and I think it also leads to some of the attitudes we have on drinking, which create more alcoholism over a period of time, but it's not the subject we came to talk.
Okay.
I only ask you to have a thought about the fact that, you know, there are places where smoking is benign. I don't know if a tree makes a noise if it falls and no one is there, but I know the tree falls, and the same thing, I know there are going to be people out there walking around, and I'll tell you something, I try to get to a lot of meetings, I can't get here at 6:00 on Tuesday night, not that you should have a round-the-clock meeting, but that being the case, there'll be some people that are out there that are smoking, that are oblivious to the fact that we're putting in these, and they're very, very happy that you can't walk into a restaurant and smoke, and you can't walk into a school or sit on a plane, but there are some areas that I think you have to be a little bit less restrictive on, from my point of view.
Thank you. Yeah, Council President?
Yes. I think raising awareness is important. I think that's what this does. I think enforcement might be difficult. I think conceptually, if you want to raise the awareness for people around us, I think that's an important part of what you're trying to project here.
I have one more.
Counselor?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Councilor Mill said, I can certainly understand, you know, town buildings, school buildings, you know, any facilities, athletic fields, things like that, because you have a lot of children around you, a lot of people, but like Council Mill said, somebody that maybe has taken a walk with their dog in the park, or someone that wants to go to the beach, I mean, that's a public place, that's not a school, you know, facility and things like that, and, you know, now we're controlling, you know, everyone, so I think we do have to, you know, just try to find an even ground somewhere with all of that, but the awareness is wonderful. It's great, and I don't have a problem with the age either, but I think some places, there are people that, you know, you have to understand that there are people that do smoke, and, you know, we're telling them, now you can't smoke anywhere in the town of Winthrop, where are they going to know?
Well, only public spaces like parks and beaches. It's not sort of, anywhere in the town of Winthrop, we're sensitive that we would never infringe on someone's right to smoke in their own house or on their own property.
Yeah, and I think in my parallel with drinking, you can't drink in public places, you can't drink on the beach.
Or at the beach, exactly.
And these are places that a lot of children--
One of the type of-- Counselor?
Drinking is not an apple and orange with smoking, in all honesty. Drinking is a regulated industry from top to bottom. Cigarettes are not regulated in the same, they're licensed in a different manner. And listen, I think it's great, and if you're willing to chop off people's fingers for littering, I'm all for your regulation, but I think we, you know, I'm against the litifying.
But it's a passive regulate, it's not one that, you know, like we're having the smoking Nazis out there and looking for, you know, that are going to be doing that. I mean, you know, we don't have a specific designated, you know, police officer doing that or anything. It is more of, as Counselor Sanford said, it's kind of raising awareness of things, and the citizens would police themselves, I guess, is what I'd say.
Is that how you guys feel with--
That's what we do, yes, absolutely. It empowers a citizen who may be at a park with their children, have someone smoking next to them, to say, actually, that's not okay for you to do around me and my children.
Yeah, because enforcement would be very difficult. Any other comments from the council?
Any other comments from the council or from the public? Anyone in the public have comments? Again, thank you, and Thursday night, if anyone who's not here tonight is watching on TV, feel free to join in here on Thursday night at six. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have the slides on there, but we're gonna go ahead and do them anyway. Unless you want to... Why don't we do them under Jim's report? Public comment?
Uh, a couple of weeks ago, a woman in my neighborhood passed away. Her name was Katie Purley. And, um, I think she was well into her nineties. She'd been a fixture in the, um, been a fixture in the Highlands since I was a kid, probably because of the fact that she had eleven children or so that ranged from across a whole span. And I wanted to mention that because I didn't get a chance to do it, and, um, there are in everybody's section of town people who are just sort of features of the town that you, especially when you've been there a long time, so I wanted to mention her. And, and it brought me to thinking about another subject, and that is the fact that something I spoke in the past and was reminded of, and about my lack of desire to name everything after everybody in town. And, um, I do still think that that's a valid thought, but there are, um, there are major pieces of real estate in town which house people's names, and then there are opportunities for minor pieces. And nothing is more evident of that than when you walk around the, um, the MWR. There are benches remembering hundreds of people. And I don't know if it's the job of the Memorials Committee or not, but I hope it would, some group would take it around to really see if people can be remembered. I, you know, I don't know if the town would do it or if her family would wanna do it, but there probably should be a, um, a bench in the park that remembers her. So, you know, people, you know, in remembrance of her and other people like that will step up and give us a lasting legacy in our community, the people that really brought a lot of flavor to the table. So I just wanted to remember her to her family and, and all, so thank you.
Thank you. She sure was a classy lady.
Thank you. I think she was ninety-five.
Yeah, she was in her nineties. Any further public comment?
My only thing would be, um, and I don't know if this is the right form of, what can we do to make sure that the DPW and everyone else has the necessary means to deal with storms like this in the future, I guess, seeing what happens, you know?
I think maybe Jim was gonna talk about that in his report, and that would be a budget process as well. I did have only one piece of correspondence, actually, two of them. One came from a citizen, Ken Kilmain, who lives on Wave Way, and he was very, wanted to make it very much known, and I'll quote what he said in his communication, "On behalf of my neighbors on Wave Way and myself, I want to thank you guys for your hard work and tremendous job that you did during the storm. It's much appreciated by my neighbors and by me." So, thank you to Ken, and thank you to those who caused that letter to be written. And the committee reports, economic development, Council Sanford?
Yeah, we postponed, and we're having it, uh...
On the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yeah. At the next storm. At the next storm. Six o'clock, February seventeen. It'll be right here in the hobby room, uh, just prior to our council meeting.
It had been scheduled for Monday night, but due to the storm...
Yeah, it's been scheduled twice and rescheduled, so...
Council Dovento on the finance?
Finance Committee has also been unable to meet due to weather, so we have this meeting scheduled at the same time, um, in the council chambers. We're not, we, we'll have our meeting in order to comply with our meeting law as well as our charter obligations. But I'll remind everybody that we do have, most of the items that are before finance, we're also gonna have public hearings that same night before the full council. So, um, we, I would stress that if anybody has any concerns, they'll have two bites at the apple. If they can't make a six o'clock meeting, there'll be a public hearing at the seven o'clock council hearing on the same items.
Yeah, Council President, if I could just back into a little bit? Just on the agenda, there'll be, we'll be talking about Grover's Avenue parking, uh, future parking for beach parking, basically, as well as parking meters, so just to give the general public an idea.
That's at the economic development?
Economic development meeting, yes.
And the, the public hearings that Council Dovento mentioned were for the sidewalks project for Pico and Cottage Hill, and the transfer of the, uh, the water meter, um, upgrade funds, and the transfer for some work at the rink. So those are, but the three public hearings will be that same evening. Much to his dismay, poor Council of Bancori has been in Florida while we've been enjoying all this, uh, all this snow, and he's sort of suffering with the heat, but, uh, he's, he's due to arrive sometime tonight if the, if the airport welcomes him. So he will schedule his rules and ordinance meeting to, for the items that he has on the table when he gets back. Mr. McKenna, how many?
Good evening, and I have already made broad comment with regard to my impressions of things in terms of how we've been going about the storm recovery effort. And, you know, we are learning a lot. There are some lessons, all of them, to be learned in events like this. You know, among them, you know, just how much you can tolerate as an enterprise, and understanding where our limits are with respect to both manpower and equipment, and to appreciate what those limits are, and, you know, understanding that, you know, whether they're enough or whether they're not enough in terms of a going-forward basis. And so we're gonna have to take a measure of that in the next few weeks, understanding, you know, what, uh, what this really has meant, you know, in terms of, uh, the use of our resources, and whether or not we need to do some more augmentation, both in terms of labor or contract assistance, or as well as equipment improvements and additions to our fleet. And, and taking a measure of, of, you know, the condition of, of our present equipment, and understanding, you know, its ability, you know, or lack thereof, and whether or not we need to do some more in-depth replacement effort. You know, we saw our front-end loader, the one that we recently acquired, have a blown head gasket, and Steve has been nursing that through this recent storm event very carefully. And the time requirements for replacing that head gasket, um, you know, are such that, you know, you have to schedule an appointment with John Deere, and they have to have you in queue, and all the, you know, the weeks of, of planning just to repair really puts us at a huge deficit. So, you know, having, you know, that as our primary loader and having a secondary loader that's aged really still, you know, means we've got an Achilles heel with regard to just the loader issue. So we did have to reach out and bring in contract loaders from New York to assist us, and they've done a tremendous job. But it does beg the question, you know, under extreme circumstances, you know, just what, what happened in terms of our, our equipment. Plus, you know, other, other vehicles that are very much aged and outliving their useful life, we, we certainly need an extra, um, you know, standard without a doubt. We, we, what's become clear to me is a need for a ten-wheel vehicle that has the mass and the ability to move snow above the eighteen-inch level and to push back, you know, the, uh, the snow banks significantly such that we can have, you know, deal with, you know, the totem pole effect of storms and, and where you put the snow problems that we have, you know, in our narrower, you know, streets. So, and then that has to be outfitted properly as well. You know, we have, as I said earlier, we have a, a fighting force that'll, that'll take on Goliath, but, you know, you don't wanna do that every, every time, you know, you've got an event, and, and you need to have the proper equipment, and I think, I'm preaching to the choir, I know I am, with respect to this. We just have to see clear to find capacity within our budget to start really adding to the strength of, of our fleet so that we can handle these things more appropriately. You know, if one were to say to me, well, shouldn't we have planned for, you know, the, the snowmageddon? It's hard to do, you know, it really is, and every community's in the same position. It's very hard to, to plan, and then to expect that you would acquire equipment to, you know, sit idle while we wait for the storm to hit. You know, it's not, you, you do learn some lessons. Plus, the fact is that there are some, there are some, you know, contract, you know, contractors out there who will help, and they have. But, but large-scale providers, you know, look for the guaranteed, the guaranteed payment, you know, and the scale of operation that will satisfy their fleet, you know, needs. And we're sort of more the ones and twos kinds of, you know, proposition. So it's, it can be challenging for Winthrop to be able to get, you know, in on, on the contract, you know, angle for, for dealing with these kinds of storms. But we have, you know, I thank Paul Flanagan for working as, you know, a co-broke on the, on the, on the acquisition of vehicles out of New York, which has, has been helpful for us, and, and they, they did come through in a big way, and they're, they're working as we speak, you know, moving snow right now, you know, down the center and Walden Street tonight. We'll see a major push, and the center business area will have, you know, snow removal efforts going on. And when we have the ability to do it, we can do it well and do it quickly. And I think it's, it's important that we recognize that, that equipment is just a vital interest and investment in this community now and going forward, and we, our, our capital plan needs to reflect it. And so, you know, I know you all appreciate and have witnessed, you know, the, the challenge, but we're gonna have to have, have an honest conversation in our budget process about what our equipment needs really are and how to, how to, how to invest in that. We did prepare a briefing for the council tonight on our, on the math problem that these storms have provided us, and I'll ask him to come on up and help with that. Do we have a screen?
So what we, what we've sort of put together, we reached out to, um, the DPW Director and Police Chief and Fire Chief, just to try to get our arms around what these storms are costing us. And this is sort of to date, we're at about, for, for the winter, three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in total projected cost to date, with still another month-plus of winter in front of us. And as you can see, it's broken down, a lot of labor costs, we have materials and supplies, we have some vehicle repairs, contractors that Jim referred to from Buffalo, and then we have fire department and police department overtime, total all three thirty-one now. So how do we pay for this, right? We budgeted, as you are all well aware, ninety thousand dollars for this particular, for, for snow and ice removal for this year. So we currently have a deficit of two hundred and forty-one thousand. And if we could go to the next slide, I just wanted to kind of show you how this situation this year compares with the last two fiscal years. And, uh, snow, snow removal, snow and ice is one of the very few budget line items that you're able to deficit spend, but you still have to pay for it. So what happens is you can deficit spend during the fiscal year, and then at the end of the year, when we calculate our tax rate for the next year, that deficit comes off of, comes off of the levy that you'd be able to raise in that subsequent year. So, um, essentially what you're doing is you're reducing, um, your, your operating, your, your available funds for your operating budget if you, uh, if you fund too much, and if you have too, too large of a deficit in your snow and ice. So, past years, we've had, in FY thirteen, we had a deficit of a hundred and thirty thousand, last year a hundred and forty-seven, this year to date, we're at a deficit of two hundred and forty-one thousand. Each year, we have increased the snow and ice budget by ten thousand dollars. I think we should continue to do that. We could even try to get up to maybe the one forty, one fifty range. The problem is if you go too high with the snow and ice budget, and you end up budgeting more than what you incur in snow and ice costs, in the following year, you're not able to, um, you're not able to carry it as a deficit and, and record it on the recap. So there's some sort of, uh, it's sort of a delicate balance, if you will, as to budgeting for snow and ice and incurring these expenditures. So, um, our recommendation is that we try to be somewhat consistent with what we carry on the recap, what we carry over as a deficit for the following year. It's been a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty-seven. I think if we stay in that hundred and forty, hundred and fifty range into next year's recap, and then fund the remaining deficit from our general stabilization, because this is extraordinary, and that is one of the purposes of stabilization fund, to deal with extraordinary events. I think we should continue, as I said, to increase the snow line in the annual budget. I'd like to bring that up to the one forty, one fifty range going into FY sixteen, and, uh, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions?
My only question was, I mean, you had said about, you know, having equipment that sits idle. I would think of that more, I'd rather have that insurance, if you will. That's what I think of it as, is, and I, I mean, and I don't know, and maybe it's a Finance Committee question, is what's the best way to do that? I mean, acquiring all that equipment would be a hefty, you know, thing versus whether the winter months it can be leased, or things that we've talked a little bit about, what, you know, what would be the best way to, to give them all the tools they want, not just purchased, you know, one large one or things like that, that maybe it can be done, you know, leased for a few months each year or something like that? I don't know.
Yeah. Council President?
Yes.
To respond, they, that's, that's a very good question. That's, that's precisely what we're trying to think about. And, you know, the, the fleet acquisitions we've done recently have that, that in mind, where we try to find, you know, the highest, you know, bang for our buck and, and be as utility as we can about deploying, you know, loaders we use all the time, all over the town. Clearly, in my mind, we have a need for a ten-wheel vehicle, if nothing but, yes, to, to be able to handle snow in an excess of, of an eighteen-inch event, but also, that's what we would load snow in, is a snow removal vehicle, which is what we're doing now with our contract, ten-wheeler. We're using it not to plow, but to actually remove snow. So we, we double-use it in a snow event like this, but also, we would use it during the spring and summer for, you know, all of our projects and whatnot, and we do have the capacity. Generally, you know, the DPW has liked the idea of having a, a light fleet to, you know, handle the town, and generally, that works in, in anything up and through, you know, a foot of snow. Beyond that, you need muscle, and so we, we need, we need to have that in our fleet as a, as a permanent augmentation of our fleet. But we can also use it as a, as a dump for a variety of uses beyond, beyond the snow. So that, that would be a critical acquisition, I would submit. Plus, you know, we need another Bobcat, and we need another loader. So there are some things that we need to get, and we can easily make a case for a lot of things, but I think we do need to prioritize those and, and, and discuss with you and, and the Finance Committee, you know, those priorities, and see what, you know, what we can afford to acquire.
Council Dovento?
As you said, on the ten-wheeler, we had, one thing we had been toying with the past year, so was it on the Snowfighter?
Yeah.
Because the old Kodiak is, um...
Thirty, thirty years old.
Is it that old?
It's almost as old as the Director. Wow, a shot fired across the... It's thick together, you know?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's about twenty-eight years old. But, um, you know, that's, done a great job, and we could probably, I, I didn't look at, um, a ten-wheel, but I looked at, um, six-wheel heavies. We're in a funky situation right now, where Ford's, GM's Chevy stopped making that series of trucks. Ford is in retooling mode for their Big F series. It looks like the only ones available are Internationals and Freightliners. And with a four-to-six-month lead time to get one, we need, um, you know, for about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I was, I was going on a six-wheel drive for about a hundred and fifty. We can get into something, but we need to get into it now, if we wanna see if it actually... Just like we have, I mean, we have a beautiful plow truck on order. It'll be here in April, I think. So may, I think maybe we may even wanna take a look and take a bite out of an apple this year, so that we don't back ourselves in, so we can get something delivered for, let's see what's out there on the GSA purchasing.
So to your point, you know, we do have to do some study and then, you know, time it right and take all that into account.
Council?
You want to start? Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, I think we should have been doing 130, 140 on the line item anyway, and I would like to see that come through in the first revision of the budget. I wanted to go there two years ago. I think it's a good place to be. What I'm, what I saw in one of these slides here is, you know, is what I want to focus on, at least on this element of it. 200, 227, okay, 10% increase. Then you have an anomaly. This 331 is COB on what data? We covered up with Buffalo, is that their full card?
Yeah, this is, this is an estimate. This is everything that's in plus an estimate from the department heads through today.
Bought today, doesn't start up fresh again next week. We're on a rolling clock right now. Anything, any more snow adds to the bottom line.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Because, listen, I think we, you know, I wanted to go for the second truck. I made no bones about that, that being the case. Now we can't, you know, we have an anomaly and my feeling is you pay the anomaly out of your stabilization and I would actually bring that to finance and get it paid up now before, you know, I know you want to carry someone to the recap, I can live with that, but I would get the heavy part of it out of the way in this year's budget. It's when it happened and, you know, I'll listen to any thought on it.
And that's entirely good thinking, but I would submit that we're still trying to sort out what our reimbursables will be.
Well, that was my next question.
And we're talking about that with the state and that's a very, we have to be careful because this, as Tim points out, the statute's got, is a two-pronged problem. It's got, you can't overspend or, and if you, and if you overbudget, you know, you have to live with that overbudgeting, okay? But you leave money on the table in the next year. But, but also, you know, how much you can claim is reimbursable can't be, you know, something that you budgeted for, okay? So it's a, it's a very delicate balance and that's why they allow the deficit spending to occur.
Hold, one other time. Councilman.
That was, that was another caveat to my thought is what element of this 330 is gonna potentially be, you know, coming back? Because I would, I would take that out of the equation even though it's a year coming.
So we'll take a measure of that. Chief is talking with MEMA. There'll be a 24 to 48-hour window that they'll snap the lines on and say, this is what the emergency covered. And 75% of that or a percentage of that they'll, they'll agree to as reimbursable. And then they'll come out and they'll audit us and, you know, they'll make sure that, you know, if we claim 100,000, they'll probably give us 60, you know? And it is a tight, you know, window that they draw on that. So that's to be played out. So at some point, we'll know what that is and we'll reduce that from, you know, the balance and then we'll have a good sense of what our deficit will be. And then, and then we're, you know, we agree that having analyzed this, that, you know, this is a bit of anomaly this year, let's hope so, huh? And looking at an averaging effect, we need to be in and around the 140, you know, budget range. And that, that doesn't put us in a place, we think, that's going to threaten our abilities to effectively use this statute when we need to, for a subsequent year, as well as to make sure that we're not leaving money on the table, you know, in a future year.
Craig, can you finish?
So, so that would be my thing. I like to get, I like to get my bills out of the way and see where I fear at the end of the day, just my philosophy. Now, you said something that, that's paradigm shifts. You said the DPW liked to sort of work on the light side. Now you want to make a switch to balance that off. So we didn't see, we saw, I think, two pickups from them in last year's capital plan, okay? And we had 83 on a truck. So the question would be, at what level can, can we go to, you know, because I think that this pickup is what, wasn't that 8,000 a year or something? Didn't you have that put out over a five-year plan? So what, what level can we go to? Because my feeling is, is that's what the sustainable level has to be. If you can go to 35,000 a year on trucks, then you got to find a way to get the cost of those trucks because I think when we react, when we look out the window and we can't see the forest from the trees, you think you got to get all the, but this is New England and Lord knows, the day could be over tomorrow and this, we could be, you could be looking for pumps tomorrow to, you know, we're, we're a 20-degree day away from a different situation. So I don't want to get too deep right at the reactionary point.
Right. And I think at this point that when we start to do that kind of stuff, that the DPW committee should get together and weigh what they think rather than having an open council thing. That's why we have committees. I would suggest the DPW committee put up...
Put that on the agenda. Rich, you have...
Well, no, actually, Councilor.
Again, you know, you talk delicate balance, I mean, whether it's the equipment or whether it's trying to forecast what we should have in the budget. There's not a city or town in Commonwealth of Massachusetts that anticipated in their budget for this kind of a snowstorm. So everybody's in the same position. I hope the general public realize that, just not Winthrop. And we forecast as best we can through the finance committee, through the town manager and Tim, relative to what we should have in that account. And again, there are some things you have to look towards for the following year or, you know, if we go over that budget. As far as equipment, the, and I couldn't agree more with the Council President, you know, the department heads and the town manager need to make that decision because, you know, again, delicate balance because you can have equipment that's, that's so big and so, that we won't, wouldn't use and would just sit idle and folks wouldn't even be able to maybe operate it. Or have the opportunity to make sure we have something in place for the heavier of the storms, but, but I think, again, that's, that can't be debated, in my opinion, here. Maybe the finance committee, but I think it really has to happen with DPW and the department heads.
No, I agree 100%. I mean, I think it's just, you know, that the DPW and everyone has done a great job. It's just there are some people that are in less than ideal situations in the town.
Right, yeah, I agree.
But, but you're right, anything we can do and is it, my understanding, it's kind of a standard of practice than it is to carry this deficit until maybe the snow season is over and then once that is recalculated, that's when, that's when you can pay it down or pay it off?
That's precisely, we do this every year.
And that's mainly to maximize the reimbursement? You might get from the state or from the government?
Maximize reimbursement and not leave money on the table that we can't then draw from, you know, going forward.
And it's a standard practice to carry some of it on the recap every year. Many, many, many communities do that. It's just when it gets to be too much, that's when you're really causing a significant impact on your subsequent year budget, so.
Council Director.
Yeah, I mean, on the budget, I think we've doubled it, if not more, in the past five years. I think we started 30, 25, $30,000 so years ago. So we, you know, we're making conscious effort to get the budget to where, to a pretty realistic number. And I think, you know, again, you know, when it gets to equipment, maybe we'll, that takes a whole different time because that, the, we had toy, not toy, but we had started discussion on the capital plan of the, of a Snowfighter to replace the older one. And we have to be careful on equipment, making sure it's double duty, get a bang for our buck out of it. And I just, you know, I can, I can just remember the first storm I got presented to service for, I may, may not have had a license to operate when I was driving, but it was a Blizzard of '78. And a couple of years after that, you know, three or four years after that, we were buying equipment for very short money because everybody went out and bought a lot of heavy equipment. There were more Oshkosh Snowfighters bought between '78 and '82 than they could build. And they're sitting in yards now with 1,200 miles on them. So you've got to be careful on what, what you're doing, going for, for equipment. We'll sit down logically, there's a lot of new stuff out there, what works with town, what can, what can make the turns in the town, but that's a discussion we'll have with the town.
Sounds like we could get a good deal in a few Oshkosh.
Power steering. But you get, you know, so, you know, I just want to say, we, you know, we've been through a lot. I was watching Marty Walsh's press conference this afternoon and he made the statement that you really have to be, understand, for five feet of snow in less than two, three weeks, people need to be realistic. It's not that, nobody planned, can plan for this. Thank God, we haven't had substantial damage, loss of life, loss of power, flooding, let's be grateful for that. And, you know, I, I like the line, let's be realistic, what we, what we're up against and what we just got.
You know, and to that end, if I could continue my presentation...
I'm just going to ask you if I can interrupt. There's no objection. We did have a request from Chief Flanagan to be reappointed to the MWRA for four more years and he's just about asleep in the corner and I'd like to release him back to duty. So if we could move to new business and have a motion, Council San... Council, motion by Council Sanford, seconded by Council Calla, that the county council reappoint Paul Flanagan to the MWRA Board of Directors for a four-year term to expire February 15, 2019. Motion's been made and seconded, but in order to carry on, we need a motion to waive Rule 2C because it wasn't on the agenda. Motion to waive Rule 2C, Council Boyager, seconded by Council Vice President Mail. All those in favor of waiving the rule, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous on the main motion to appoint Paul Flanagan to the four-year term, reappointment to February 15, 2019. Any discussion? Not all those in favor.
Does he want it? Does he want it?
He requested it.
Okay.
It'll help me get more trucks if we get that.
Well, that, that's sort of what brought it to mind when, when Mr. McKenna talked about the co-broke that Paul Flanagan did on getting the, he also did a co-broke with MWRA, which we appreciate. All those in favor of Paul's reappointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Paul.
Just before I leave, I didn't talk numbers with the boss today, but on reimbursement at this point, as of 2 o'clock today, the blizzard is a standalone event and that's what we're, we're eligible for 75% with some battering of whatever we spent to mitigate the blizzard. Today, yesterday, excuse me, we submitted what they call a damage assessment form, which because of historical snowfall, snow, snow is allowed to, to be in it. And the town put in, I think, $69,583. It was just shy of $70,000. So at this point, we did get a lot of equipment, private contractors paid for through MEMA. So we don't see that invoice, nor is Tim running it on our deficit sheet. So that was a plus and the declaration for that blizzard took care of that. But right now, we're eligible for basically 75% of $70,000.
Okay. Rich?
So you, that 70,000 isn't reflected in the 331,000?
Yes, the 70 is.
Okay, all right, sorry.
75% of 70,000.
Right, no, that's fine. I just thought we were talking 400,000. Okay, great.
Thanks, Chief. Back to Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you know, and it's, as we try to communicate throughout these storm events to the residents of Winthrop, you know, I do and have received a number of letters expressing, you know, a similar line of concern, which is, you know, the challenges people have with, you know, dealing with the replowing of their streets and the fact that their sidewalks and their driveways get plowed in and they have to go back out and do it all over again. And, you know, I just wanted to make a public comment that, you know, we, we certainly appreciate the challenge of what people are dealing with, each and every one of the residents of our community, you know? It's not lost on us at all, that it's the repetitive doing it all over again that's precisely the challenge for us as well, of getting out there and doing everything, you know, that we have to do. And yes, it, this is about two things, patience and partnership. You know, we, we, we are, you know, very fortunate that most folks in this community have an enormous well of patience and we ask for that patience to continue while we get through this period of snow, unprecedented historic snow. And we also ask for partnership, that, that people understand that we need them to continue to do what they're doing, which is shoveling out and getting their cars and responding to the, the daily code reds that we're issuing to inform people of how to move, when to move their vehicles out of certain locations and that we've got to do it. And yes, there's an obligation to relocate your vehicle so we can get in there and plow out and then they can go right back. I mean, there's a whole series of things tonight. Walden Street, for example, is getting plowed out. Folks have got to get their cars out of there. You know, the municipal lots tonight, tomorrow will get plowed out and folks have got to get their cars out. You'll get an instructive code red today that'll tell you what to do. And, and it's that response that people give us to understanding the challenge of, you know, living in Winthrop, owning a vehicle in Winthrop and not having a parking space, you know, guaranteed is, is what life is like in this town. And I acknowledge Craig. We all look at Craig. We could be making money on this, Craig.
I'm sold out on this.
We're going to sell the snow now? Snow cones?
But, you know, you know, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you to the residents of this community for your patience and for your partnership. We need them both. And we are taking calls and getting letters and folks are, some folks have reached the end of their temperaments and we understand. We just ask you to understand that, you know, we just are doing the best we can.
I think it was interesting when you mentioned that the town has to do over and over as well as the people with the driveway. And part of that is some people don't understand and they're throwing the snow back into, into the street, which means that the town has to do it again. On my fifth clearing of my driveway today, from those trucks that filled it back in again, I had to look at the positive side and say that the streets in Winthrop are clean enough so that if somebody in my neighborhood needed an ambulance or a fire engine today, the streets were clean enough and it was worth it to me to be able to, to have to hit my driveway for the fifth time. But it would be nice if people would be more cautious of blowing the snow back in the street.
Councilman.
So that doesn't mean that we can't do better.
Right.
That's right.
And, and you know, and I actually think that, you know, I just feel that through technology, we could get this done because if you knew when the person was coming to your area, you could time your removal in a lot better fashion. And it seems to me that we have to make a concerted effort to start to capture the information that allows us to communicate with individuals. Because there's no doubt we should be able to, the truck should be able in today's day and age to have a group of numbers coming in and this is the street and you hit the button and it says, hey, in 15 minutes, we're going to be on your street. In 20 minutes, the technologies have the capability is that we have to move and start to think that that's how we want to satisfy the needs of the, of the individuals in town because we are their service and that is what they pay for. And, you know, we, we, I think a lot of it goes to communications. We have this discussion all the time. I think people want to hear, we have to find a medium that gets to as many touches that we can get so people know when we're coming to do their area, when they have to move their cars. And, and I know we try our hardest, there's Facebook, Mike helped out on WCAT, but I think we have to continue to move in that direction to...
And I think, I think a coordination between the committee that you've attempted, you had the great idea and we put in a technology committee that never got off the ground. So I, I think if we could put that technology committee together with, with the DPW, again, I don't think this right now is the forum for it. It's a place to bring up the idea, but the mechanism, how to do it, I think could go back out to that technology.
And I couldn't agree more with Craig because there is GPS and so on and so forth. However, do we have the money to spend on technology opposed to buying a front-end loader or, I mean, it's that delicate balance we talk about. And it's an inconvenience for people and I couldn't agree more because the same thing, I've plowed my driveway out a number of times, but that's, that's part of, and parcel of what, which, you know, what they have to do to clean the streets and make them accessible. And we all have to be patient with them. Is there technology out there? Yeah. Can it work? Absolutely. But do we have the funding for it at this time? We have to be more realistic.
And we are a heck of a lot better off than what we see in soap bosses and so forth. Where you can just barely get down the street, the cars are all buried.
So, I mean, what about a compromise if, if you set the expectation that certain neighborhoods were at certain times a day so that, and that was kind of a standard during a storm, that this was, you know, the maze gets done, whatever this time block, so that they need to be aware, they need to be off the street and the Highlands where Craig is is, you know, like four in the morning, so they all have to move their cars at four, Craig. And, but no, I mean...
It's a route, it's a route, there's 11 routes around Tyler.
But, you know, but that's what I mean. If you set that expectation upfront, that people know that, it doesn't need to be as technology-driven that, you know, that, but if, that way everyone would have that expectation so that it isn't a, you know, the, the restrictions and the burden on the citizens, they know that it's a, it's kind of a timeframe versus 24 hours or whatever.
I know from listening to the scanner this time that there was an awful lot of reaction that couldn't be forecasted.
No, but that's what I mean. But if you set, like, again, a grid, that this is when, you know, these are the times that it gets done, within expectation, and I don't have the... I'm not smart enough to figure that out.
Okay, very good.
But the other thing would be, there are a lot of neighbors walking through the neighborhood. They were helping each other out. So it wasn't just people complaining about things. A lot of neighbors were helping each other out and things like that. So there was a lot of citizens that weren't, you know, weren't just frustrated. They were doing things about it.
Council Dibbent?
I was going to say, the only thing I can suggest to you guys is, you may want to spend a couple nights in a truck. I've worked in snow and ice since the blizzard of '78. I finally quit about nine years ago. No two storms are the same. Conditions aren't the same. It's... It's very, very difficult to do. I... Would it be great to say, yeah, we're going to have, this is how it's going to go. Yeah, but the guy driving the truck, because somebody's parked in the way, has to go down a different street and throws the whole route off, and now he's not meeting his timeframes that the code red went out about or the alert went out about. Every storm is different. We're... Let's not overreact to this. Everybody needs to be realistic. I'm going to keep going with that quote. Let's sit down in a few months, in a month, do a debriefing and see what works, what doesn't work, and what we can improve on. But to start shooting from the hip right now is just going to take the focus off. We have six more weeks to get through. Let's keep everybody safe and secure and just move forward. Okay, Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, continuing on then. We met, and thank you, Council Boyager, for your involvement and encouragement. We met with a representative from Hallmark Health last week to discuss a longstanding opening conversation we've been having with Mass General Hospital, who then referred Hallmark to us, about opening a primary care office in Winthrop. They were very attentive. They brought their brass to the meeting, if you will, and the folks were aware and had done some, you know, a little bit of research on Winthrop, and understood the very real need to address primary care in this community. And they seemed very sincere and interested in exploring that opportunity. So we answered a bunch of questions that they had and gave them a lot of information. And report is that they'll do some more analysis and present to me some ideas of their interest in moving forward over the next few weeks. So I think the meeting was very positive, and I'm encouraged by their interest and the level of effort that they say they're going to make to explore opening a facility in Winthrop. Did you have any...
So I think, you know, unfortunately, they're not... Right now, it doesn't look like they're going to be acquired by Partners Healthcare, but what they're still going to have the joint venture, if you will, and I think...
Mass General Hospital.
Mass General, yeah.
Serving as a backstop for tertiary, you know, support care.
And there is a... They are... Dr. Pransky here in town is part of Hallmark Health, and I think from... I didn't attend the very end of the meeting, but I know that they've added a nurse practitioner, and their intention was to hire another physician as well, to expand that and to expand more for family as well, because I think that the pediatrics portion was a little underserved as well. I think that was some of it. And then the ideas that we talked about, more community involvement and other things, I think that's where they're going to take a hard look at things, because I think they were surprised at the level of detail that you had got into with them about what our needs were, which I think they were happy with.
Yeah. So they realize they need to engage us more fully, and I'll stay tuned on an update that we'll hopefully have for you in the near future.
Yes, Council?
So, not any particular reason other groups that have been front and center haven't followed through? Is there a market niche that we're not catching anybody's eye on?
Mass General was very interested in it. It was the fact that they're collaborating or partnering with Hallmark Health that had a foothold, if you will, in Winthrop, so that... Because if they weren't, Mass General was very interested. They were very interested in the unique model that they were proposing. It's just that they already had boots on the ground, if you will, with the Hallmark Health people that were here already. So they were looking to build a collaborative practice with Mass General and Hallmark Health there. As far as, I don't know what to speak of with East Boston and where we're at with those folks. I think it was...
They're working on their plan process now. They're vetting their plan with the building department, looking at, you know, build out of the facility here on Pauline. So I think that they're progressing.
So that would be expansion of that and the East Boston, that would be some interesting increases. But no, there wasn't a particular. It was...
Where is the foothold of Hallmark? Because, I mean, I told the Hallmark, and I didn't know there was any...
So I guess Dr. Pransky is...
His little office, that's it?
His little office, yeah. That's what, you know, they're not looking to open a huge clinic. No, they're not... You know, there's 18,000 people in Winthrop, and Mass General already takes care of, was it 20% or 24% of, go to like Mass General Revere or Mass General in Town or things like that. So the need to, if we build it, they will come. They don't feel that they could capture, I think, again, I'm paraphrasing, a significant market share by opening a brand-new large facility here that, you know, in Winthrop that they would be pulling from their own, if you will. And so I don't... I think that's one of the reluctance's.
Yeah, so they have 4,000 members in Winthrop that use their facility, and because they're conveniently located, you know, a little ways, they're not interested in having a secondary footprint here.
No, they were... They are interested, but not, you know, it depends on what you mean.
So let me answer your question. We're sending people to those footprints, okay? What are the ancillary needs do people have when they go to those that aren't housed there that could be housed here?
I don't think there's anything they can't get at those facilities right now that they couldn't, you know, that they would need to go elsewhere.
Just wondering what you get as a spin-off or something.
Well, you know, I think that for us to speculate their decision model is hard to do right here. I think what's really important for us to keep in mind is that we have people hearing us, and they're taking it very seriously. Let's give Hallmark a chance to look and refresh their information, so that they can come back to us and see how they can better serve this community, not just with what they thought they had, but with what they think they need and what they know now, what we truly need. And they were not, in my impression, they were not afraid of looking at expansion, to what extent, and how that would look like, and where it would be located. Those are questions. And so let's give them opportunity to do that and to respond to what we've now put in front of them, which is that, you know, this... And I think Mass General wasn't, as Council Boyager said, they weren't just looking at how they can better, you know, serve their facilities in Revere and elsewhere. They too thought that more had to be done in Winthrop.
Right.
It's just a question of what, and to what extent that that would help this community. They offered up a very creative model for this community that would, you know...
Mutually beneficial, I think, is what they were looking for. They wanted to, in both of them, Hallmark Health but Mass General as well, were looking at measured expansion, meaning let's start out with a small thing, and, you know, if we build it and people start to really... Then we would increase our availability there, would be the kind of thing.
I think maybe one of their issues is too, that Hallmark already has a pretty good hold on the town.
Well, that was their reluctance to just have Mass General come in. Well, more because of their overarching relationship with Hallmark, not because of Dr. Pransky, but it was the relationship they're trying, Partners and Hallmark is building. I mean, what was supposed to happen was they were going to become part of Partners. But that's not going to happen because of the court. But they didn't want to ruin that relationship by just, Mass General just expanding, you know. They're trying to coexist, if you will.
Well, I mean, how do you have to drive to Melrose to go to Hallmark?
Right.
Yep.
You know, I was totally not aware that we had a footprint here. I mean, they're offering the facilities that they offer in some of these other towns. I mean, they don't have all the equipment and all the different things that, you know, we need. So I can't understand how that would be satisfactory to have that little footprint that we have now.
You're talking about like full ser... You're not... No healthcare is going to come in here and do a full-service mammogram, CT scan, all that. That's not a cost-effective model for them now to, in a small town like that, you know. So it's more of looking for primary care and things like that. They're not going to build... It would be lovely if they would, but they're not looking at when you can go to Revere, driving, you know, a mile and a half to three or four different facilities that have complete all those services with Beth Israel or, you know, they're looking at...
And you have insurance. You know, it has to be available for you with your insurance.
Correct. Yep.
You can't just go to them because they're there.
Right, right. But, like, you know, there's Hallmark in Malden. But that's what I'm saying. Is there a lot of facilities they don't want, they can't, they don't... Their thinking is, I can't... Winthrop is a great place. We'd like to service with primary care and things like that. But a full service, you're talking about, you know, where you can get soup to nuts when it's within driving, you know, within a half-hour drive. They're not looking to expend the capital, I think. At least, again, I'm completely speculating.
But they're trying to be innovative.
Yeah.
And meet us where our need is. And so stay tuned on how that they will provide, you know, an analysis of how they can better serve the community. And that's what we're hoping for.
Moving on.
Moving on. We are studying the... We're starting the budget process. Memos went out a few weeks ago, and departments are, while they're pushing snow around, also pushing pencils to get their budgets done. The school committee's meeting tomorrow night to look over a proposed budget for the schools. I am planning on attending the meeting to hear a first draft of what that proposal is. And I just want to thank Sarah and Jenny Delahanty for a wonderful public service announcement video that they did, they put together, advising, you know, residents about the dangers that one could have in such a snowstorm event. And I don't know if we have the ability to run it for just a...
I'd love to see it.
Are they related to the chief at all?
Yep, they're the chief's daughters. Happy birthday to Chief Delahanty.
Happy birthday, chief.
And congratulations to his daughters for such a wonderful job. So if we could hear it now.
Very good. Thank you. That's my report. Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Moving on to the school department update. As Mr. McKenna mentioned, the budget plan committee is meeting tomorrow night to put the first run of the budget. And as Paul mentioned earlier, school is open tomorrow, thanks to the people who we've already acknowledged, that everything is clean and ready to go. There is a plan for snow, a plan in being studied for makeup of, if right now, we're just, I believe, we have one day left that we can call off school without going beyond, without not being able to meet the 180-day requirement. Other cities and towns are in the same predicament, and they're doing studies as to how they're going to make that commitment of the 180 days. Some of the ideas are Saturday school days, shortening of the, or if necessary, canceling the April vacation. What has to be done is that the requirement has to be met by June 30th. So something has to be done. Back in the blizzard of '78, there was some very creative stuff. I was a teacher at the time, and we added a half-hour per day for so many days, but that's no longer an option. It has to now be 180 days unless you get special permission. So anyway, they're working on that. Middle High School, the new building, I don't know if you've driven by it, but I was by there today, and there was, the cranes were going and the steel was moving, and unbelievable. They're on time, they're on budget, and they're going to be pouring concrete again as soon as the spring hits. Music Matters, which we mentioned before, it's the arm of the school that brought music back into the schools, is having one of their fundraisers that was scheduled for last Saturday, but they postponed it until March 20... March 13th, Friday the 13th. That's easy to remember. And if anybody wants tickets, you can get them by calling the Music Matters number or going on the website, which I thought I had with me. Yes, winthropmusicmatters.org. You can buy the tickets. Boys Hockey Conference title, and they have clinched a spot in the state tournament. So that's a quick update on the school department. Under old business, the metered parking at Grover's Ave, we're going to wait until the next meeting on that after you have had your meeting with the economic development. Under new business, Council Dibbento, have a transfer of $10,000. Do you have that one in front of you?
Yep. I think we should just refer to...
Finance?
Transfer of $10,000 from Fund 964 capitalization to General's special fund article. Do I have a motion to refer finance?
So...
Motion by Council Sanford, seconded by Council Boyager. All those in favor of transfer of... Refer to finance, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Transfer of $24,000 from Council Reserve to Town Manager. Do I have a motion to refer to finance? Motion to refer to finance.
Motion by Council Dibbento to refer to finance, seconded by Council Boyager. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. A snow and ice removal request, Mr. McKenna. Would you give us that?
Yes, that's a required vote of the council. Now that we've explained the fact that each year, we, yes, we plan to deficit spend because of those reasons already explained, we do have to have an affirmative vote of the council to acknowledge that that's in fact what we're doing. So we do this every year. Indeed, we need that vote of the council as well.
Okay. So the motion is that the town council approve the provisions of Mass General Act Chapter 44, Section 31D, which allows the town to incur liability and make expenditures in excess of available appropriations for snow and ice removal during the fiscal year 2015. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Council Dibbento, seconded by Council Boyager. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Ms. President?
Yes, can I ask the council clerk to... Pardon me? Can I just ask the council clerk to add those two new ones, 10 and 24, to Tuesday's meeting? Thank you.
Seeing no further new business, is there a public comment? Yes. Ms. Manning, name and precinct, please.
Don Manning, precinct...
Three.
Three, thank you. Are we removing snow by dumping it anywhere at this point?
Yes, we have two snow, actually, three snow farms. We have up by the Bell Isle Cemetery. We have Eagle Side Park. And to build in efficiencies with the length that a truck has to travel, we have opened up the parking lot beside the MWRA care, and they're taking all the snow that we bring them. It just saves us time on the trucks, because as we lugged off Shirley Street all day today, and we will be tonight through the night, rather than to come all the way with a truck all the way to Eagle Side Park, we're lugging it to the MWRA property. Nothing is going overboard at this time.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Manning?
Did we get permission to dump it anywhere yet?
We have permission to dump it, but we, through conversations, don't have a good dump spot. We have permission to dump it, but we, through conversations, don't have a good dump spot, in our opinion, being the Public Works Manager.
Are you referring, Ms. Manning, to the ocean?
Correct.
Yeah, no, we have to get Conservation Commission approval for that. They have been in conversations with me about that, but we haven't pulled the trigger on that yet. If, if my recommendation comes through my public safety advisors, if they tell me that they need that capacity, we'll go to the Conservation Commission to get that authorization.
Was Boston given permission?
I would say, yeah, I think as of the news, the two o'clock conference called Marblehead, Swanskit, and Boston, and I think Wayne. And they, they have ideal dumping spots. And Boston, you know, and I think Mass Court always dumps overboard and pays the fine.
So, the MWRA, that's Boston territory, correct?
Correct, but they're not dumping over.
Well, why wouldn't we use their pier and their nice access area to dump?
Well, I think the MWRA, MWRA being an environmental agency, it will be a last resort for them to dump overboard.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Counsel Mayor?
I, yeah, I was told the other day that the transfer ran an article mentioning that you would not be running for reelection next year. So, I wanna be the first official person to commend you on your service to the town.
Thank you.
So, I applaud President Gil for his work over the last couple of years. He's brought a calming influence and great leadership to the council and town government. He's instituted some new committees and worked tirelessly to ensure professional-level management from all of the branches of town government. And we can be thankful for your service to the town in your recent role. So, I wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And I'm also further impressed by your desire to stay true to the feelings of the founding fathers who felt that civic service is a place for a citizen to enter the arena, provide direction, and then allow others to participate. I also feel that people should become involved but not overstay their time allowing others to enter the domain.
Is that right?
So, whereas with that thought, that I'll also take the time to announce that I will not be seeking another term as Counsel for Precinct 4. I hope that freeing up my position will allow for new thoughts and citizens to present themselves. And I'm happy to announce that I've been approached by an individual who's interested in taking over my spot. And assured in a timely manner, they will move forward and make their name known. I know the individual. I think they're a great individual for the position and I will support them wholeheartedly. I mentioned over the past couple of years with help from members of the council, I've had the great platter to work on a variety of issues, project plans, proposals, some of which have been incorporated, others which haven't. I'm glad, you know, that the town had the opportunity to really take a good, solid look at planting trees. I'm happy of my effort working on the FEMA maps. I'm really ecstatic that the schools move to move Khan Academy forward. And I wanna thank the council for taking up the Chromebooks and immediately moving them forward. I was proud to sit on the economic development through the NPC process with you. I think it was a great deal. But more importantly, I am most happy in my three and a half years with having to put up a strong position for supporting that the town get the best deal in the casino. And I'm glad that many of you came along with me that way. And although I won't be running for my current position, I will announce at this time I won't be a candidate for the presidency of the council. My desire is to help further the goals, programs, and directions that I promoted over the past three and a half years.
I just, I, I have to stop, Counsel Mayor, if that is not appropriate. I appreciate your...
It is public comment, so...
It's public comment, but it's not an appropriate place to announce a candidacy.
Well, I will...
To promote a candidacy. No, it's all right. And I didn't mean to shut you off, but that's my ruling that it's not appropriate.
All right.
Moving on, any further public comment?
Mr. President, can I just urge people to log on to the town website and register for Code Red? Since the blizzard, we have 300 new members. Each day when we make a Code Red call, it tells us how many calls. The night of the blizzard, we made 9,648. And as of today, I think we're like 10,013. So, people are logging on. The police department is not looking to tow anybody's car and that's why we've been aggravating to some people that have driveways and everything else. But again, we're trying to make this recovery from the snow as painless to all of our residents, those who do not have driveways as well. So, again, just click onto the town website, www.town.ma.us. There's a big flashing red line. It'll take you five minutes to register and you'll get tomorrow's call.
And, Ms. President, I can... And I'm gonna go on one more piece on the Code Red. What people don't realize, it's an automated system on delivery. If you don't say hello, if you don't say, press a button, it's gonna hang up and not respond. So, you need, you need to answer the phone, even though they may sound like there's nobody there. Please say hello. And if it's an unknown, you know, if you're getting a caller ID that doesn't look familiar to you, please answer the phone. And as the chief said, and the chief gives us beautiful updates, you know, weather forecasts and planting guidance. But, with South Florida, get on your cell phone. You have it on your, your home phone, get on your cell phone.
If Code Red has an app, so if there's a weird alarm in the country...
You'll get it.
And it comes up on the caller ID, which is not still getting.
But we got just over 70% connection tonight, so 7,000 calls either were left on an answering machine or somebody actually was...
So, if, if nobody answers, they don't, and Nick said you have to say hello, but if nobody answers, it goes to the answering machine?
If you have an answering machine. Otherwise, it'll be registered as a no connect. And after every call, we get a printout of how many connections we have.
Good, all right.
Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, do I have a motion? Motion to adjourn? Counsel Dovant, motion to adjourn, seconded by Counsel Sanford. All those who favor, say aye. Oppose, Ms. Manning?